This is the P-Bid. Karen, you have a report?
Yeah, it'll take a few minutes anyway.
It's a little faster than I was expecting. Yes, thank you. So, our consultant from NBS wasn't able to be with us in person today, but I do have him on standby and I can dial him up on phone if there's any questions that I can't handle. Today, we are asking the council to take steps to put the proposed Citywide Property-Based Business and Property and Business Improvement District for the Emeryville Shuttle to approve the preliminary management plan subject to ratification by the parcel owners. And so, there are several resolutions in front of you today, and they are to initiate proceedings as well as to take steps to actually start the ballot process. Some of the slides that you will see here next are actually you've seen before, but because not everyone has necessarily seen these slides, didn't necessarily hear the presentation on May 19th. I will go through them quickly, but I wanted to at least have them as part of tonight's council meeting so people who are at home can catch up if they haven't seen them before. So, what is the Citywide Property-Based Property and Business Improvement District? It is a special assessment district, which means that it is a taxing district in which the assessment is determined by the special benefit received by the assessed property owners. And in the case of the assessment for the Emeryville Shuttle, the special benefit is seen to vary according to either land use or service accessibility. It is an annual levy collected through the county property tax rolls, and it requires both a Prop. 218 ballot process, which means every potentially impacted parcel owner receives a ballot in the mail, and then subsequently, the city council can take action to adopt if the property owners ratify the proposed assessment district after also conducting a public hearing. It is a protest vote by mail-in ballot of the parcel owners with the ballots weighted according to the proposed assessment levy per parcel. The enabling legislation for the city to undertake this is found in two places. At the State of California, it is the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, which, for some strange reason, is in the Streets and Highway Code, and also in the City of Emeryville's Ordinance 15003, which is an ordinance that established the procedures relating to the formation of assessment districts. And one of the things that this ordinance did was to allow the city council to initiate a assessment district as opposed to it being just by the petition of the assessed property, potentially assessed property owners. Whoops. So, just to summarize the assessment district, I know you've probably listened to this quite a few times before, is that the assessment levy will be based upon the trips generated by parcel land use, and there are 26 categories, as well as service access. And that's the difference between about 80% of parcels in the city are within a quarter of a mile of a seven-day service route, while the balance or about 20% are on a five-day service route. And so, there's a weighted assessment based upon proximity to the seven-day or the five-day route. The annual assessments can be real -- easy for me to say. The annual assessments can be recalculated for changes in land use and/or service access if warranted. So, for example, if the five-day service became a seven-day service, or if a parcel that perhaps was a more low-trip type, such as a hotel, became a shopping center, which is a higher trip generation land use. The proposed P-Bid will include all parcels, including residential, both rental and homeowner, and both single and multifamily parcels. And the TMA will continue to act as the P-Bid's owner representative. As outlined in the law, it has to be an owner's representative. However, as we'll get to governance, the TMA board's composition bylaws, its proposed follows a slightly different path than in the current P-Bid. The proposed P-Bid is for a 15-year period that would start in fiscal year 1516. That would be the fiscal year that the assessment would be placed on the ballot, and that would be for the service year 2016, and it would end in 2029, 2030. Though, of course, at that point or earlier, it could always be extended through another similar process. And in the proposed P-Bid, any annual assessment for any property would be capped at no more than 5% of the previous year. So, there's a hard cap. It doesn't mean that it would go up 5%, and in fact, we've had a P-Bid for the Emeryville Shuttle for 15 years, and the average assessment increase has been about 2.7% a year. So, in determining the assessment, our current assessment engineer went through a process, a much more, I would say, deliberate and more fine-grained process in that recent P-Bids have been under scrutiny, and there have been some court cases. And so, one of the things that's a little different than before is that the general benefit that would be obtained through the service of the Emeryville Shuttle cannot be placed on the assessment rolls for the property owners to pay. It has to be paid in another way. And so, the assessment engineer first based upon the annual, the 2016 need for service, in addition, which was modified to include the city's new minimum wage as well as a 3% cost of living increase over what currently exists. First, as well as repayment to the city for the cost of actually establishing the district, that entire cost was looked at, which is $3,000 -- sorry, $3,000. $3,865,400 roughly. And it was determined what was the general benefit of that. And that kind of includes either for the benefit that is accrued by parcels outside of Emeryville, which cannot be assessed, like around the MacArthur-Bart. You know, people who live in Oakland can walk to that station or otherwise use the shuttle, or for pass-through trips. So, the assessment engineer determined that about 12.29% of the total operating cost were in that category, either special benefit that could not be assessed because the parcels were not in Emeryville, or were pass-through trips. And so, that's roughly about $455,500. And staff has asked that the city pay that through by the general fund, and later this evening, you'll be looking at a mid-cycle budget adjustment, and that does include funding for this. If, in fact, the P-Bid passed, this would be the general benefit portion. So, the assessment itself would raise for 2015-16, $3,400 -- about close to $3,410. Sorry. $3,410,000. So, the way that the assessments were done per parcel was to look at the special benefit that was accrued by each parcel, and the single-family house was considered kind of the control. And the ITE manual for trip generation that is commonly used for, for example, I know that the city has used it for development fees, for traffic impact fees. That was used to determine the trip generation by land use. And then, what was added to that was whether a parcel was on a seven-day route or a five-day route. And any common areas, for example, in HOAs, roads, easements, parking lots, and parking garages, and gas stations, and auto repair shops were excluded. This was because either these are square footage that don't themselves generate parcels. They're, you know, they're part of the land use that does generate that, those trips. Or in the case of a gas station or auto repair, you don't take, you're not going to use a service to go to a gas station to gas up your car. So, these are ones that, you know, there's no special benefit because the purpose of going to that parcel is an auto-related trip. So, here are some of the, to give you a sense of the proposed assessments by some of, by the different land use classifications, and I've highlighted some of the most common. The management plan itself, which is attached to your, attached to the agenda item, and I have a copy here, will include the specific assessment for each parcel in the city. And that will also be included in the ballot that is provided to every parcel owner. So, you can determine exactly what it is that you would pay under the proposed assessment district. So, just to hit some highlights, for a single-family residential that receives a seven-day service, it would be $171.52 per year. And for a single-family resident that is on a five-day route, it would be $122.47 per year. So, these are both per-year costs. For an office, it's on a 1,000, it's per 1,000 square feet. And so, an office on a seven-day route would be just under $199. And on a five-day route, it would be a little over $142. General retail shopping per 1,000 square foot, and again, these are all annual costs, would be a little over $770 per 1,000 square foot. And on a five-day route, a little less than $550 per square foot. Light industrial would be $125.21 per 1,000 square foot. And on a five-day route, a bit over $89 per square foot. And for a multifamily residential, which is the lion's share of the residents in the city, if you were on a five-day route, it would be about $111.50 per year. And if, per year, and on a five-day route, about $79.60 per year. And then, the last thing I showed was warehouse, which would be between, would either be $63.46 for the seven-day route, or $45.31. And again, this is all included in the management plan like this to give you the basic categories, but there is also a attachment, which gives the assessment for every parcel, including city parcels. And by the way, in addition to the roughly $455,000 that the city would be covering through the general fund per special benefit, the city also will be paying on its parcels. Public agencies and nonprofits are not exempt. And the city's parcels, which includes the Marina, as well as our square footage, is roughly $100,000 per year. So, this gives you a bit of a breakdown of the percentage that each kind of large type of land use would be paying. I kind of collapsed the categories. So, you see that previously, I would say, the current P-Bid, the retail, sorry, that it was about 90% commercial and 10% residential, but then, not all residential parcels paid in. Only rental properties or a few condominiums that had conditions of approval that paid for the service. Under the current P-Bid, about 80% of the assessment will be paid by commercial properties, including retail, office, warehouse, industrial. About 20%, and about 20%, 21% would be residential, be paid for it. And just as a bit of information, while this is based upon trip generation, not use, residents now are about a third of the riders that use the Emeryville Shuttle. So, if you look at it that way, the difference is still that the use is very heavily residential. So, governance. So, because I know that this has come up a lot in the community about what the governance structure would be and a concern of how the governance would be done, I actually put here the exact words that are in the management plan that the parcel owners would vote on, and I did in blue the highlights. Essentially, as according to the state law, there has to be an owner's representative, essentially, someone who's representing the owners who are paying into the district. And that is the TMA, which is a nonprofit organization whose membership consists of parcel owners that are assessed under the district, in which case, this is every parcel in the city. And that the TMA would be governed by a board of directors whose membership is designed to equitably represent all stakeholders in areas of the city with specific provisions for representing residential parcel owners as well as commercial-industrial parcel owners. And the way that this would be done is that the TMA's board's composition and TMA bylaws shall be ratified by a general membership meeting of the TMA, which is all the parcel owners who are invited to come to this meeting, and then incorporated in the city owner representative agreement between the city and the TMA. Because the city essentially holds the money for the service because the county, once they put the assessment on the property roll, they cut the check to the city, which puts it in a designated fund that could only be used for the service of the Emeryville Shuttle, which is the purpose of this assessment district. And then, the city turns around and, according to state law, shall contract with the owner's representative to actually administer the services under the district. So, a little bit different than currently where the TMA board composition and the bylaws were just ratified by the general membership. This management plan says that while the TMA boards' composition shall be ratified by the general membership, that those decisions must be incorporated into the contract between the TMA and the city. This provides an added level, let's say, of scrutiny for whatever the board composition and the bylaws are. The city, of course, does not have to agree to incorporate what's presented to them in the contract. And this really is an added layer to make sure that no particular stakeholder group in the assessment district can essentially dominate either the composition or the bylaws. The city will kind of have final say in the sense of being able to say, "We will not include that as part of the contract." And so, would kind of then return it to the general membership to come up with something that was equitable. And of course, this contract is something that is ratified, that would be approved by the city council at a city council meeting. So, if there were any stakeholders, any property owners that did not agree with what the general membership ratified, they would have the opportunity to make those opinions known to the city council. So, it is an added level of scrutiny. And that would also include any amendments that would be made to the board composition or the bylaws. So, in addition to that, the city also reviews, would be reviewing any adjustments to service to determine if there was a P-Bid impact. So, for example, if the TMA wished to extend service to unserved areas, there's a very few areas of the city that are not served, kind of the far northern part of the Triangle neighborhood. Because those parcels are currently unserved, that would require a change to the assessment district and the determination of general versus special benefit. So, the city would have a role in having to review and approve that.
Wait, can you repeat that again? Having to approve what?
Only those changes to service that would provide, that would essentially make, you don't get assessed if you're unserved. So, any decision that would essentially extend service to areas that are not served would be brought to the council, to the city. But those adjustments that are, I would say, the bread-and-butter adjustments, stops, and those kinds of things, those are already covered by the management plan and says that there may be slight readjustments based upon, for example, if a five-day route went to a seven-day route. Those parcels had a chance to vote on that in the assessment, in the management plan, so that wouldn't come. So, it's only a very small number of decisions.
But what if someone decided, what if they decided to eliminate routes? And then, they said, "Well, you don't have to pay anything."
Well, that would be something that was not part of the management plan, so that couldn't be done.
It couldn't be done that way.
That would be the kind of thing the city would say, "No, you can't do that unless essentially you go back out to the parcel owners and amend the management plan."
All right. Okay, thank you.
Right. And then, also, the city does approve the TMA budget every year, and based upon the recommendation of the TMA, sets the assessment levy every year. So, there is that added role for the city as well. So, just to kind of tell you where we are with the adoption schedule. There has been, as you know, a community process. This, actually, if I thought about it, we have been talking about long-term strategies for funding the Emeryville Shuttle for almost two years at this point, including having the Emeryville Shuttle Task Force that was made up of both residents and businesses in the city to determine, that came to the conclusion that a P-Bid assessment district should be, should continue to be the primary source of funding for the Emeryville Shuttle. Of course, the city will be looking for grants, particularly for capital investments, buses, and the bus yard that we will need. And the city has already had discussions with the Alameda County Transportation Commission around those possibilities. And so, that really started two years ago. And there have been several times, as you know, that this has come back to the city council. But I would say the more recent discussion were, started March 17th with the first reading of the local ordinance to set the guidelines by which an assessment district would go forward. There was a second reading on April 7th. The effective date of that new ordinance was May 7th. There was a city council study session on May 19th. And today, we're asking for the city to approve the draft management, the final draft management plan that would go out, that would be the basis upon the vote that would take place, and to initiate proceedings to put it on the ballot. If the council agrees to do so, then the ballots will be mailed by June 19th. And property owners have 45 days to submit those ballots. And then, they would be counted on August 4th. If the vote is an affirmative vote, then the city would hold a public hearing. Of course, we'll notice that hearing in advance. And in fact, one of the things that you're doing today is setting that public hearing for August 4th. And based upon the outcome of the ratification by the property owners and the public hearing, then the city council, if they choose, may adopt the P-Bid. If the city did, council did that, then the assessment would be placed on the property rolls by the county on August 10th for the fiscal 1516 fiscal year. So, any questions or comments?
Karen, if this P-Bid is passed and the assessments are placed on the roll, does that mean that the assessments that are already on the roll for 1516, there would be double payments, or would they replace?
No, this would replace, this would replace.
I think we have to make that very clear. I don't find it in the staff report, but it's something that, it should be clear. If this P-Bid places, no one's going to be paying double.
No one will be paying double. And we will look to make sure that that is clarified, that's very clear in the management plan as well. But yes, there is no intention that you're paying double.
I think it's especially important that these very large property owners that are into tens of thousands of dollars understand that this is a replacement. It's not a doubling up.
We will, we will make sure that that is the case.
In terms of the general membership, being able to meet and weigh in on board composition, I'm just wondering about the, if you could speak to the nature of the meeting where that ratification would take place, and how would those votes be weighted the same way that the ballots would be weighted?
Under the current bylaws, it's one parcel, one vote.
Okay.
For the general membership. I think the biggest protection is that that board composition bylaws would be incorporated in the contract between the TMA and the city.
Right.
So, you know, that, you know, so obviously, there is every reason to facilitate an equitable, or to, for the stakeholders to kind of come to some agreement around what is equitable.
Right.
Because if any one group decided that it wasn't and made that case known, then I suspect that the council would say, "Go back and try again." It's also true that most of, pretty much for the first year, 2016, fiscal year 1516, most of the major decisions have already been made. You know, the budget is already adopted, the assessment's already, you know, been levied. And so, you know, there's a little, you know, it, the, what will happen in the next year is pretty much already been determined because that is what is in the management plan, what happens for 2016.
Karen, what kind of a process is there during this vote? I'm anticipating, I'm not anticipating, but I'm contemplating that on the one hand, we have these very, very large property owners that have, you know, a lot of votes. And then, we have individual properties. Is there a, is there a mechanism for proxies? Say, a whole group of individual homeowners got together and they wanted to do something. Could they, is there an allowance for proxies?
No.
This is what they do in the homeowners association. You know, if they're voting for the board of directors, they allow proxies.
I believe under the current bylaws, there may be. But again, what the bylaws going forward would be, you know, that is still to be determined.
I think that's something we really have to look at because individual property owners, one-on-one against the big guys, that doesn't work. But if you, if they are allowed to collect proxies and get a number of votes, there, it evens it out. It's just a process.
It is right now, the bylaws for the, for the general membership, it is one vote per parcel, so it's not weighted according to the assessment as it is for the vote for the P-Bid itself. And so, quite frankly, it's more likely that residents will come to a general membership meeting than a lot of businesses. So, from that point of view, I think that that's, it's more, I think, going forward, whether or not that one parcel, one vote is something that the general membership and the council thinks is the way to handle the general membership. Also, the way the board functions is, right now, it's one, you know, it's one vote per board member. You don't get additional votes being on the board if you're a large parcel owner versus being a small parcel owner.
Yeah.
And that's the way it is now. And again, this would be something that the general membership would weigh in on.
If we were going to consider something like a senior rebate, at what point would, would we do something like that?
That would be a city program. Special assessment districts, and maybe I'll turn to my city attorney. But special assessment districts, unlike parcel taxes, do not have senior exemptions because the special benefit is received whether or not you're a senior or not.
Yeah.
However, and so, the, it would be placed on the, on the tax roll, and the senior would have to pay. However, the city can separately from that process decide to have a rebate program. And if that is something that the city council is interested in, it would so direct staff. We would come up with a program and bring it to council for consideration at a later date. And maybe our, I don't know if our senior, city attorney, or did I explain it correctly?
But Karen, that'd have to come out of the general fund, right?
Yes, it would.
Yeah, it wouldn't come out of the revenues for the go-round.
No, it could not because those are special assessment monies.
Right, right.
We did look into about how much we thought that would cost because we had heard from the community that that was a concern and thought that there might be a council member who would raise that. So, we think it's going to be about $20,000 to $40,000, you know, depending on how many seniors actually request that exemption.
Uh-huh.
And that's based upon what we know of the number of seniors that are receiving exemptions from the school district parcel.
Right.
And we would assume that probably the program that we would bring to you would follow similar guidelines just so, you know, it's simple for people to not have one way for one thing and one thing for another thing.
I'd be interested in.
I would support that too.
Karen, at what point in time does the city consider this kind of program? Is this something that we can put on the ballot to say that the city either has this program or considered the program? Or that is not, that's a no-no?
No, I would highly recommend against that.
Okay, Michael.
If there are no more questions for Karen, I'll open it up for public comment.
Very good job, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Gee, it seems so lonely in here after the minimum wage. Well, I must say, I have to give credit to both council members. Ron Freund from Western Emeryville. Good evening, everybody. I think Karen and council members addressed a lot of the issues that I and others have raised in the past. I still am not totally clear, so let me just get these out and see if we can clarify them. So, do I request you to ask staff to respond to questions?
Just ask your question.
All right.
Into the.
Quickly. All right. All right. So, I'm not clear on the seven-day and five-day service. Who decides that, which then in turn would decide what the assessment would be for each multi-dwelling unit? Is that correct? So, that's one question. Is that clear? Okay. Okay. And does that come after we've voted or will it come before so we know what we're voting on? Okay. Secondly, the senior rebate that two of you at least, and I think three, would, can you go ahead and instruct staff to look at preparing something like that tonight? So that's two. Thirdly, on the governance issue, there was one area that we didn't speak to and I still am not clear on, and that is the disestablishment of the PBIT. On the one hand, I saw the engineer's report say there are many different conditions under which it would be done, and the only one that you would have total leeway on there would require a supermajority, which in other words would be four-fifths. So I'm not clear, is that a requirement under PBITs or can you simply say that the disestablishment will be by majority? So, is that?
Karen, are you prepared to answer those questions?
Yes. The seven versus five-day route question is based upon a parcel being within one quarter of a mile of a stop there, and they actually looked at road access. So it's not like a radius in which, you know, you were across the railroad tracks, so maybe you were within a fourth of a mile, but you couldn't get to that stop. So they actually looked at, you know, how would you actually access that stop? And so, about 80% of the parcels in the city are on a seven-day route. And that, and I would say the five-day route is essentially the Hollis route. And I, a little background is, you know, that is a route that there isn't a lot of, you know, retail and, you know, there's not a lot of parcels when the route was done that are seven-day businesses. So that was done as a five-day route. And then the seven-day route was because at the, you know, there were a lot of parcels that were interested in seven days.
So it's not an either-or, it's determined by what the parcel is.
Which one?
So we can assume we'll be on the seven-day route at the Watergate area.
And you can look up your specific parcel to know exactly it is, but yes, if you, if, it's pretty much the railroad tracks in west, I would say, is a seven-day route, and then the Hollis is the five-day route. In terms of the rebate, I think I counted to three. So the staff will bring that program back for the council to be able to implement, assuming that the PBIT is established. In terms of the disestablishment, I believe, and the city attorney can weigh in, that that is part of the city's local ordinance that requires that any assessment district, for it to be disestablished by the council, kind of at will, requires a supermajority.
Yeah. I would just add, state law does provide for disestablishment proceedings, but it, there are certain, it's limited in certain instances like malfeasance that, and whereas under our code, the council with supermajority vote has the ability to disestablish it for really any reason. But in, in either case, you can't disestablish if there are sort of outstanding contractual issues that are in need of the assessment, but that's usually a provision that would come into play if, if the assessment district was also anticipating issuance of bonds and the bonds had a, you know, several-year term to repay, but we're not issuing bonds, so I don't necessarily see that as a, an issue for this one.
It's more likely it would be because, I know that there's a lot of interest in a regional transportation system, the E-Bot, you know, the Emeryville, Berkeley, Oakland transit system, and if that was established, there was regional funding behind it, then the PBIT may not be, you know, how that's funded. And so you wouldn't have to have, you wouldn't need to have the PBIT because you would have another funding source.
Great. Well, I appreciate very much the steps you're taking.
Any, any other public comment? Come on up.
I just wanted to point out really, very briefly here, Mr. Freund, the previous speaker, there was no clock on him. Interesting. There was no clock. Well, he spoke over three minutes, no clock. I'm not complaining, just noting, no clock on Mr. Freund. Mr. Freund is a popular person, a nice man. I also, also note here that the Brown Act was not violated when he asked some clarifying questions and he received some answers from the council and from the staff. That's not a Brown Act violation. That's all good, wonderful. Information was, was put out there for the public edification, and that's all good. So just remember, you may, citizens may ask questions and the council and the staff may answer simple questions with clarifying questions. That's legal. Just so in the future, just keep this in mind, what happened just, just this moment ago. That was fine, it's legal, just keep it in mind, please. However, I would like to request that the clock be applied fairly, fairly inequitably to all people, even unpopular people.
I apologize, it's rather hard sometimes for me to keep track of the time when I'm also the staff person who's providing the agenda item.
I'm trying to make sure that everyone's treated fairly inequitably here. That's all I'm requesting. Thank you very much.
Betsy.
Betsy Foley, resident. So I guess I don't really understand the, I thought I understood it because I've been following this for several, I've been following this for several years, and I thought I understood the one vote per $1. But then the idea that the one vote per parcel, it's sort of like either way, if it's one vote per dollar, for example, Watergate, just as an example, because it's a really large development with 1,249 units, and so that's about 1,249, well, anyway, if you multiply that by 100, whatever that comes out to, that's, that's less than about half of what Wareham, which is one, one parcel, has. And so we'd have to get like, everybody, absolutely everybody in Watergate would have to vote one way to counteract what, what half a vote of Wareham would do. And so that, to me, doesn't seem, that seems a little bit uneven. But also, the reverse seems really a little bit strange to me, the one parcel. I mean, the fact that my vote would have the same weight as Wareham doesn't sound really reasonable to me either. So, so I don't really understand that. And so one of the things that I liked about the current board composition, although it doesn't currently have, they don't currently have a residential person on board, but if you had one or two, some people would like to see two residential things, that I, that I could see, but having it all set up so that everybody, my vote is equal to a large company's vote, I don't really understand how that's going to work. And the other thing I don't understand is when you talk about saying that the membership will vote on possible changes to the bylaws, which could include what sorts of seats are on the board, and then, because the last vote that took place, that's what it was about. It was about changing the residential seat so that it could be either resident or business. That's always going to be the larger majority of the, the large companies, they're always going to have the majority. So presumably, they would not eliminate the residential. But when that vote took place, there were only either 16 or 18 votes out of all the people assessed, because nobody votes on those things, they don't participate. And so that makes me a little bit uncomfortable to think that a very small group of people who are interested and participate, and that includes me, I do participate, and so I do have opinions about these things. But I would like to, I like to feel that there's some sort of fairness to the way it all works out. And I'm not saying that I have the solution. I'm just saying that I think that these are things that need to be taken into consideration.
Thanks. Mr. Carpio?
Sounds like this political vote is absolutism to me. Next item I want to bring, and I stuck on the deal last time, is that the Emmerguround buses system doesn't seem to be green at all. I mean, there is a power demonstration that has been made with a system, not yet, but that has been designed, it just needs to be implemented, in which the buses are powered by battery and have solar cell, not only on a bus, but where the, the bus is stopped. So when the bus stops, it can get a quick recharge while people load and unload. And that will save tremendous amount of money because each person, on average, 175 pounds, will use only 50 watts per mile. And so, this, this is way, way, way over at the efficiency of any diesel engine, you see? And you have to see also that diesel engine will use also, regardless if it's loaded or not, while the battery is proportional to the way, to the weight. And also, we have lots of sunny day, we have about, I want to mention that, you know, there is a competition that are made in which vehicle travel over 65 miles an hour for an average of 3,000 miles without, on solar cell and battery, no auxiliary power. While these buses could have a small auxiliary unit to recharge the battery when the sun is not shining enough or when it's overcast. So you should take this into consideration. This is very important, the economics of it. And that will, if the economics is advantageous, then people will, will be more sympathetic to the bus, to the bus, because they see that lots of people use it free and don't pay nothing, like myself.
Ken?
Well, we haven't seen the engineer's report, so I don't know if it would be, well, I haven't seen it. Been asking for it for a long time. He was supposed to let us know when it came in, so we don't have to.
It's in the packet.
Well, it wasn't in the packet, I saw. You know, I think this whole assessment could be open to challenge, but the thing about it is that it's not fair. I mean, the board isn't fair. I mean, you should know what the board composition is going to be before you vote on this. I mean, saying that we're going to do it later, that's not right. And, and we haven't seen the engineer's report. I don't know when it was ready. You know, trying to get documents from the city clerk's office, we got this thick of ridership information, and each page has no information on it at all, paid $28 for it. You know, we've been wanting to find out whether this should be a public system or a private system. There's millions of dollars of state cap and trade money coming down for transit, and do we know whether we're eligible or not? Why should we move forward with this without taking a look at those options? I mean, all we've ever asked is to make this fair and to look at the options. We've never had any opportunity to look at any other options. I guess it doesn't matter. So you want to assess residents. Well, nobody, none of the residents have any direct notice that they're going to be assessed. People at 1500 Park, whatever other residents you want to assess, they don't know anything about it. Not one thing about it. You've had public meetings which are poorly attended. Don't you think those residents deserve the opportunity to know about it? But you know why they don't know about it? Because the vote's already in the bag. Those four corporate people on that board control that vote, and that's all there is to it. There's never been any justice. The assessments haven't been fair. All these years, you have one part of town, five-day service, the other part was seven-day. Now you're going to address it, but what about all the years that it hasn't been fair? Nobody, everything's ignored. The board is in place, you know, Wareham's been in control for a long time. I think it's time for that to stop. So, I mean, this, this, this says right here that only special benefits can be assessed. And a special benefit is those conferred on the, on the property owners, which is not conferred on everybody in this district in general. And that's not what's happening here. Watergate has express service. Isn't that a special benefit? I don't know. I think you guys will make a mistake if you go forward with this tonight. I think you could wait. It wouldn't hurt. You got a whole another year before this would have to be done. And rather than, I can't say it's going to be challenged, but it's possible. And I think you should wait. Thank you.
What I would like just to say is that we sent a postcard to every parcel in town about the last study session.
Right. We got it.
Obviously, every property owner will get a ballot to, to vote on the assessment district.
Can you silence the, your phone? Is there any other public comment on this? All right, well, there's a couple of resolutions, 7.1.1, 7.1.2 pertaining to this.
Mayor, I'd like to just, once again, thank Karen and the rest of the staff who've worked on this. This is, is a very complex issue. We are absolutely appropriate in moving ahead in a timely fashion. This service is critical to this community, and I really appreciate the work that's been done, and I would move the first resolution.
A second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move the second resolution.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both pass unanimously. This takes us to 7.2.